We have five out of the seven.
If we can go ahead and reflect that Mr. Patterson just walked in, one of our fearless commissioners. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is, for the approval of the agenda, let me see if staff has any recommendation or any additions or changes to the agenda for the town? Do you have?
No. Well, we will have one under matters from staff unless you want me to bring it up, add it to the agenda.
No, we don't need to add it. I think it's not a decision we're going to, it's just a discussion item, so, okay. Any changes or modifications to agenda from the commission? Is there any questions?
We talked just briefly before the meeting started. It looks like in the time element involved in each item that the church situation has pretty much reached its goal, and it won't take long, but I'm sure we want Rick to be here, right? I was going to ask if we could put it in front of...
So your recommendation is to change the order of under public hearings?
Under public hearings, right.
B to in front of A. And is there any...
I second that motion.
Second motion? Any comments?
I have a question. Is the applicant here for item B?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay. And just to give additional clarification, there is a recommendation from the town as well on that item, and we're still waiting on the other applicant, what the town's recommendation is going to be. So it gives us a little bit more time for Mr. Bellis to show up. With the recommendation and second, with the change, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I guess what we'll do is go on each minute, and we'll go with the February 4th minutes. Commissioners, have you had time to look at it? And if there, do any of you have any changes or recommendations? Yes?
On page five, just a small typo, Dyna. Let's see, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, there was an express concern about, I think that was supposed to be wanderers rather than wonderers, people roaming around the neighborhood.
Which, where is it?
It's in the paragraph beginning with Mr. Jose Coraño, page five, and it's the February 14, February 4th minutes. Thank you.
I do have one addition I would like to put on there as well, and it's on page two of those minutes, and it's under A. The, when the voting, the vote into approval of the minutes, those abstaining were Commissioners Pollard, Garcia, Durham, DeBae, and Lucero. And I would like to state that due to us not being present for that meeting, if we can put that within the reason why we abstained. Are there any other changes?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes of February 4th as amended.
Second. Any more comments? There's a first and a second. With no further comments or questions, these are the minutes. I'm just going to just pull, signify by saying aye if you approve the recommendation.
Aye.
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 Those against? Okay. Those minutes passed. Next minutes are the minutes for March 4th, 2015. I also have on those minutes on the second page, under adjournment, it does indicate due to the lack of quorum, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting adjourned at 5:30 PM, I would like to put in there with no action taken, just to make sure. If there are no other changes or questions, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? The minutes have been approved. Next is 5C, which are the minutes for November the 5th. I do have one question and some clarification. I was not in attendance of that meeting, but, and looking at the minutes, this is a regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, regular meeting, November the 5th?
It was a joint. The next two minutes on there, November 5th and December 3rd, were both joint meetings between the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. I'm just curious because it indicates that the Planning and Zoning Commission is a regular meeting, but it was called to order by Oscar Polosios, who is not part of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He's the chairman of the Historical Preservation. So I'm just kind of trying to understand, can someone else call this meeting to order though one of the commissioners did not do that? I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Well, I think because the template in NOVUS and the system that we use, it's either Historic Preservation or Planning and Zoning. We don't have one set up for joint, and so that's the reason why we used that one.
I'm just trying to, again, trying to determine who's the driving force in calling the meeting to get to order. I mean, there were four, what I see here, there were four present from the commission, and I'm just curious why, even though it's a joint, I know we did one time have both commissions call their commissions to order, and so...
What I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is we actually can do two separate minutes, one for each of the groups for the workshop, and we can, staff will accept that we'll change this to indicate that it was called to order by the Planning Commission Chairman and the roll call taken of the Planning Commission members present.
Just to throw another issue out there, we didn't have a chairman at that time or somebody in that position, so I'm just wondering who would have called the meeting to order for the commission, so it's a little...
That's a good question.
I'm just trying to get a clarification of the four that were here, if one of them did call the commission to point to order and for this meeting or not. And the four that were there at that meeting was Mr. Durham, Mr. Pollard, Ms. DeBae, and Mr. Lucero. And do you recollect?
I think it was Mr. Pollard that chaired that.
I think I did, but I don't remember clearly.
Okay, well, you know, and that's fine. I know we, there for a couple of months, we didn't have a chairman, so...
I was sitting next to him, so...
It looks like we have the same issue on December 3rd, where both Historic Preservation and Planning met together, but the meeting was called to order, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and that's fine, because I did call, even though I wasn't the chairman, I did call it for the commission.
Right.
And as Mr. Bellis has indicated, having two separate minutes would be best.
Maybe going forward.
So that wouldn't be an issue on December's, but I wasn't sure that someone within the commission did call it to order, and that's fine, but if we can, I don't know if to approve this, subject to getting that clarified and reflecting that there was a motion by the existing commission and a second, and voted to approve that.
The other thing we can do is take them or not approve them now, but next time we have a joint meeting, approve them at a joint meeting.
Okay. We're talking about November 5th. What's the will of the commission? Do you want to table this until the next meeting and get that cleaned up to reflect that it was called by the Planning and Zoning?
Mr. Chairman, given that there was no action taken on the meeting at all, that it was more an informational meeting, I'd encourage us to just move forward if we could.
I'm fine with that. If we're fine with that, I then would need a motion to approve the minutes of November 5th.
Second? Was that a motion?
No, I need somebody to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
There's a first and a second. Any other comments?
No, Mr. Chairman.
If you agree with the recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? And I'll abstain because I wasn't there for that meeting. The last minute to be approved is December the 3rd. I just had a question. Within the minutes, there's a statement on, under page 21, matters from the staff, 78, the last paragraph, "The Planning and Zoning Commission and Historic Preservation Commission will have a special joint meeting for the third week of January for a public hearing, which would be Wednesday, January the 21st." Did we have that meeting? I don't recollect if we ever had that meeting.
I don't believe that we did after all.
No, I believe that was intended to review the conceptual designs for the nursing home.
Right.
And they had requested that, and then they did not make the application date time for that.
Okay. Just a question. If there are no comments or changes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 3rd?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of December 3rd.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay. There's a first and a second.
We're going to get this cleaned up, yeah.
Any more comments, changes?
No, Mr. Chairman.
If not, if you agree with the approval of the minutes for December 3rd, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? The minutes have passed. Next item is item six, which is Citizens Forum, where we allow individuals within the public who would like to speak on any topic besides what's on the agenda, they're free to come up and speak. We give about five minutes total for any other individuals that would like to speak on any issues to the commission itself. Is there anybody that would like to speak that's not dealing with these two items on There's no one on, has requested to speak, so we'll go on to the next item. Ms. Gonzalez, if you will reflect, Mr. Billy Romero of the commission just walked in and is present now?
Yes, I marked down the time that he walked in.
Okay. So next item is under public hearings, and as we modified the agenda, the first item is the item PG 2015-10 SUP, dealing with the church. And this is dealing with property owner Robert Draper and his agent, Patrick Rayel, requesting special use. I will turn it over to the acting planning director to present this.
For only a few more days. Mr. Chairman, we reviewed the application for special use. It is complete. We believe that the use proposed as a church is consistent with the neighborhood and zoning for the area. It's a pretty straightforward proposal for an existing structure and has sufficient parking, and unless there are questions by the commission, the applicant will make the short presentation, and it's staff's recommendation that the request be approved.
Okay. If the applicant would like to, or please step forward and make a few comments in reference to the presentation, appreciate that.
While he's coming up, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Under the staff recommendation, it said the special permit request be approved with the condition the occupancy of the proposed building is an Assembly Group A. Did they clear that up?
Yes, they did.
Okay, thank you.
It is.
Well, you state your name, and I don't know, the swearing and thing, do you want to do that, Rick, or?
Sure.
Could you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, before this body today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Patrick Rayel.
And your relationship to the application.
I am the applicant, also the pastor of Prodigy Church.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and give your presentation of what you're submitting to the commission at this time, a brief one?
Okay. The thought comes to mind that, you know, a man's life work is a reflection of himself, so in essence, you know, this work is a reflection of who I am. Just for a brief background and tying it into the application, as I previously mentioned, I am Patrick Rayel. I was born and raised in Taos, New Mexico, and graduated from Taos High School in 2006. Shortly after graduating from high school, I had some struggles with substance abuse issues, which I am ashamed of, but nevertheless, it is through, you know, church and through religious institutions in which I found my way and actually received the help that I needed in regards to entering into recovery and experiencing a transition, you know, out of substance abuse into sobriety. And in doing so, I felt compelled to go into the ministry after I experienced that transition in my life. And from that point forward, it was always an endeavor of mine to start something in my hometown that would contribute something positive to the community. And in doing so, you know, I felt like this work would contribute something positive because I wanted it to be a reflection of who I am, you know? I figured that because I have experienced this, that I want to contribute it. I feel that it's only right. So therefore, it was in October of 2014, after receiving my minister's credentials through the General Counsel of the Assemblies of God, that we began a process in establishing church in Taos, New Mexico. And in doing so, we wanted to get everything right as well. We started looking for a facility and so forth, and we actually got in contact with Robert Draper for one of the facilities that was available through him. And in doing so, we realized that we were going to need a special use permit in order to operate through a facility within the town or the city limits. So therefore, we entered into this process, and that's, in entering into the process, we wanted to make sure that we got everything correctly as proposed by the town of Taos. So everything that is required of the special use permit is actually disclosed in the packet that is, I believe every one of you have, from, you know, from the square footage to the floor plans, site plans, and so forth, is all within the packet. And ultimately, right now, what I have to ask is, does anybody have any questions pertaining to the packet that you've received? Is there any issues regarding that? Otherwise, how would you like to go about the possibility of approving our application for a special use permit?
Thank you, Mr. Rayel. Is there any questions or comments from any of the commission? I do have just one quick question. In the warranty deed, it does indicate covenants, but I'm not sure if there are any covenants except, there's restrictions, which I can see what those are, and easements and so forth, but are there other covenants that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. We got in touch with Robert Draper, and we tried to get everything that was consistent with what was required from the town of Taos.
Okay. Mr. Bellis, do you know if there's any, I know that notification was given to neighbors in the area, was there any responses negative that was against the approval of this applicant?
Mr. Chairman, we received no responses in regards to this application. We're not aware of any restrictive covenants that would impair this activity from occurring at that site. However, if it pleased the commission, what you can do is approve contingent upon the restrictions that any covenants might already have been recorded on for that property.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from the question? Yes?
Not a question. I just wanted to say that this is one of the neatest applications I've ever looked at.
I concur with that.
Yeah. And I don't know whether Dyna put it together or whether you did.
Actually, it was a member of my church, it was actually a collaboration of the board from Prodigy Church.
Well, we compliment you.
It was very professional and thorough. Thank you.
Is there a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Can we make a motion indicating reference to any covenants that could and might be there, if they do arise?
I don't know how you would word that.
Well, what Rick or Mr. Bellis indicated...
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have the ability to enforce those covenants. Those would have to be enforced through another body, not us, so I really don't see the need to really throw that into it, honestly.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lucero, you're absolutely correct. Normally, we don't, as a municipality, enforce private covenants on a property. So perhaps you can either leave them out, or you can say that we're accepting this application based on the representation of the applicant, that there are no covenants that would...
I just want to share, you know, we have a meeting a month ago or two months ago in reference to the issue about covenants within that application, and that was...
An issue.
An issue at the time. So I'm just bringing it up at this time. If it, I'm fine, I want to go forward. I do understand that we, as a commission, cannot enforce that. So if you want to leave the motion the way it is, and there's a second, all those in favor, well, let's do a roll call.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollard?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Chairman Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Durham?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBae?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good luck. Next item on the agenda, again, under public hearings, is the continuation of case number PG 2015-3 PUD. I will turn over the mic to Mr. Bellis for the recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, this is a matter that was a subject of a workshop and that has been continued due to a lack of quorum at the prior meeting. I apologize for the lateness of getting you the staff recommendations on this. There were a number of matters that unfortunately the attorney and I could not get together on until just before we came here, but I will read them into the record so that the audience, a copy has been given to the applicant. Staff recommendations, the recommendation to approve with conditions. The project area had been proposed for a zoning change from R4 to R6 previously, but was denied earlier by the Planning and Zoning Commission in that they felt that R6 was inconsistent with the density and character of the surrounding neighborhood. In the current application, under consideration, the applicant is proposing to alternatively achieve a similar density increase from 20 units under R4 to 28 units through the use of a PUD overlay with clustering and dedication of open space, proposing to grant the project a 30 percent density bonus. The following are the findings of the staff with regards to the application. One, the request for 28 units is inconsistent with the earlier finding of the Planning and Zoning Commission as to the appropriate density being R4, 20 units. And again, that earlier decision doesn't necessarily bind you, but staff sees it as a guideline. Two, while barely just below the threshold requiring a traffic analysis, which would be 30 units on this project, project is proposed more than the appropriate density and is unclear despite the dedicated 28 units and 60 parking spaces, and I should say that's either 50 or 56-plus parking spaces, we were not sure on that, what the eventual population of the site will be, and that will change depending on the final configuration of apartments and occupancy, and that the project impacts one intersection, the entrance of the Housing Authority, which is a similar high-impact, high-density project, and that the narrow width of the roads on both sides create potential safety concerns. Three, the claim for density bonus is predicated on the preservation of portions of the property that include areas such as utility easements and wetlands that would otherwise be unbuildable and therefore should not be included. The final mix of the apartments between one, two, and three-bedroom units needs to be agreed upon as a part of any approval and its obvious impact on traffic, density, parking spaces. The identification of the ownership rental arrangement needs to be part of any approval, particularly as regards common maintenance, and that would be in regards to the parking lot parking space. Six, proposed site layout, including the placement of the units at the rear of the property, dedications of a green space for recreation, two entrance exits onto two separate roads, or mixture of unit sizes, preservation of the wetland, and preservation of a greenbelt area at the front of the project as a visual barrier are quality design features that improve the livability and safety of the proposed project. Staff recommendations, if approved. Staff recommends that the project be approved conditionally with the following. One, that the total number of units be retained at 20 units per the zoning already in place. Two, that the proposed site plan be approved as-is. Three, that a traffic study be required that identifies the impact at both entrances, exit points, and the intersection of La Posta and Ranchitos, with consideration given to the possible inclusion of acceleration/deceleration lanes at both entrance or exit points, and possibly a turn lane at the intersection of La Posta and Ranchitos, and intersection safety control features at the entrance/exit shared with the Housing Authority. Four, the project is approved with the contingency that any traffic features recommended by the traffic study be made a condition of the approval and be instituted at the developer's expense. And I would like to add additionally that the conditions outlined in the letter of August 11th by the Asequia de los Levatos, which are, one, a 36-inch culvert to be installed on the asequia under each driveway entrance or wherever it intersects with a driveway entrance. On the asequia on La Posta Road, two, no building closer than 20 feet to the rear of the asequia. Grading and drainage will be designed and built in such a manner as to allow any additional flow from the projects, to not allow any additional flow to go into the asequia. Access and easement of the asequia will remain as per asequia rules, and I would amend that to say as per state legislation. And those are our... And those are our recommendations at this time. And again, I would say those are based on earlier findings of the Planning Commission, which do not necessarily bind you in your actions today.
Any questions for Mr. Bellis? At this time? Have a comment?
Sorry. Yeah, Mr. Bellis, I was really pleased with the staff recommendation, particularly the reduction in units back to what the underlying zone allows, and the request for a traffic study. Both the neighbors and the commission raised serious concerns about traffic at our last meeting, and what we got in response from the applicant was a letter saying, "I don't have to do a traffic study because I'm under 30 dwelling units." And the issue was much more than whether it was 20 units, 28 units, 30 units. There's an existing awkward intersection there, and I'm concerned about site distance, access points, and regardless of whether it's 30 units or not, I back your recommendation for a traffic analysis. I would feel a lot more comfortable with this going forward, having seen an analysis done by a qualified engineer. I felt like we, because of possible liability, I didn't want to approve this without the traffic analysis, because I don't know if the town approves, and then there is a traffic issue, or accident, or problem, you know, and the town's liable, and we've made that decision that it could go forward without the traffic analysis. Just wanted to state that I'm pleased with your staff recommendation. I have concern with condition number two regarding the site plan. The current site plan shows 28 units, and my understanding is, is if we approve this recommendation as conditioned, it would drop to 20 units. So the site plan is more than likely going to change when those eight units are removed?
I will leave that up to the applicant, but I would also give him the flexibility that I think the applicant is proposing where the location of the development, meaning the parking lot and the buildings, will occur, and where the green space is.
Yeah, I just didn't want him to get locked in to the existing site plan as is proposed in your condition, because if he comes back in then with 20 units and you like it, it's probably not going to match the existing site plan.
Yeah, the presumption is you would just eliminate two of the buildings. And I would also propose, as an option of flexibility, that if you choose, rather than the, I think at the 28, you really need the traffic study. If you drop it to the 20, and depending upon the configuration and what the maximum occupancy would be based on the mix of 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units, I'm not sure, it starts to become marginal whether you want that traffic study or not at that point. So as an alternative to that, if the numbers turn out to be lower, I would suggest that the final design approvals for all entrance-exits and traffic design and safety features must receive the approval in advance from the Public Works Director.
And just so I understand...
You go ahead.
The way it's presented, there's just access, one axis, then two axes, in and out, am I correct, in the original proposal? And you're recommending that there's going to be two axes to go in and out from the site?
Yes.
Okay.
To divide the traffic evenly between the two roads.
Actually, that was the thing that I was concerned about, was the one exit. I drove that area and that property today, and that one intersection in particular is really scary. Do you have to have a traffic study in order to change one intersection, to make extra lanes, and to get the site plan so that you can see a car coming when it's on that short curve?
What I would suggest is that, because particularly at the one exit-entry point, you have directly across from it, which I think is a good idea, you square an intersection with the Housing Authority, and that's a high-density project. You have a lot of people all day coming in and out of that. I don't know what the correct alignment of that intersection would be to create the best safety features, because it is a narrow road there. I mean, I could tell you, if money was not an option, ideally, we would say that as you would pull in, we would put a shoulder there, that you could pull off the road and get in, and wouldn't slow the traffic, so somebody rearends you coming through the intersection looking the other way. And then the same thing on the other side, as people leave, create a shoulder for people to leave out.
That's why you want the Public Works to enter the discussion.
Yeah, these are usually, based on your anticipated traffic at that point, there are minimum thresholds, as is indicated by the applicant in here, at which certain design features almost become mandatory for safety reasons.
Right, well, what I watched was that there weren't so many cars, but it was the speed that they were going through that intersection, because I don't think there's a stop sign for them.
No.
And it's an interesting piece of property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I might. I think the applicant was encouraged at one of his previous meetings to consider a planned unit development, to try and achieve the densities that he was looking for, that the applicant was looking for. And I think we should give the applicant his opportunity right now to present his case for why he should be awarded a density bonus for this particular property. And all these details are really germane, and I think it's going to make this meeting go a very, very long time if we want to do anything beyond the zoning that exists there right now, the traffic study. But I'd like to let the, I'd like to suggest that we give the applicant an opportunity to make his case.
Saying that, the applicant, Mr. Yarvitz, would you like to come forward? Would you state your name and be sworn in?
My name is Mark Yarvitz. I am the agent for the owner of this property, and I will swear to tell the truth before this body.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just was handed the staff report and the recommendations, so I'm a bit behind the eight ball on my responses, but it looks like, well, there's a couple things that I don't quite understand. In the staff recommendation, the request was not for a 30 percent density bonus, it was for much larger. And in the application, when we started this project, using the PUD, and let me read to you from the Town of Taos manual once again, in terms of open space, I know you all have it in front of you, but I'm going to read it again to get it on the record. Open space usable in a project like this, according to the Town of Taos guidelines, includes land designated by the town to fulfill the open space requirements of this land-use development code, should consist only of land that is accessible to general public or all residents of the development, thus shall not include setbacks, driveways, parking lots, and other surfaces designed for vehicular traffic or private use. Usable open space may include, usable open space may include, but is not limited to, walkways, trails, parks, active and passive recreation areas, arroyos, streams, rivers, asequias, courtyards, and plazas. Except for the trails, in the most case, a minimum 35-foot width is required to qualify as usable open space. In our design, we've created 69 percent usable open space by the architect who did the work definition, 70 percent, the current zoning allows 20 units, a, we're asking for an additional eight units, which would be 40 percent density bonus, not the 70 percent open space we submitted. So the one issue of denying any density bonus for doing a cluster overlay under the PUD application, denying all of the density bonus makes no sense to me whatsoever in the calculation. The 20 that we're allowed to do is what the recommendation is stating. There is no agreement to allow any density bonus for open space. I don't understand that at all. Given that, the submission of a traffic study is your right to ask for, regardless of the size of a project, and so if required to do a traffic study, we'll have the certified engineer who did write the letter, Mr. Terry Brown, who's the preeminent traffic study engineer in the state of New Mexico, he's the one who said that, given the numbers that you have, and you all have a letter in your packet, I believe, the traffic study letter from Mr. Brown, stating no traffic study would be required for a project this small. Given the streets in that area, I would probably concur with you that let's do a traffic study anyway, because it's not a plain vanilla area. If we do a traffic study, and it does not require an XL lane or a Dcel lane, are you going to require one above and beyond the engineer's report? Would be a condition of, or a question of a condition, because I think that would, the cost of doing an XL in the Dcel lane on Ranchitos Road would probably, we'd have to go back to this project and start again and do something different. I think that's an enormous burden for a project this small. As you can see on the site plan, the dual entrance, ingress and egress from the two locations, was, came out of a meeting with the fire department, who said, "We would like to, but not necessary, have two ingress and egresses," so we accommodated his request as a possible idea. I spoke with also someone else who does some land planning, that said, "It makes more sense if you could have dual ingress and egress." But based upon the outcome of the staff recommendation, I would revert back to a single entrance and not do a Dcel and XL lane on Ranchitos Road, being quite cost-prohibitive for a project like this. I don't see that as happening, but I would, I definitely would agree with, if you want a traffic study for this project, we should have one done by Mr. Brown. He will provide you with all the information on what is required. The burden of that intersection, regardless of what we do, and the town has already identified the issues at that intersection, not being Carabahal and Ranchitos not being a perfect union, I don't believe is the entire burden of this applicant from the traffic that's generated there that has nothing to do with this project. So if the town was thinking about doing some traffic amelioration at that location, I think they'd be required to participate in that. The burden of this apartment complex really doesn't increase or decrease what that intersection already has today. Okay, so I would revert back to perhaps a, an accommodation there, but if we need to do a traffic study, we'll probably do one with a single entrance and a dual entrance to see what that would mean. In terms of the numbers that I calculated, I thought I read it wrong, but in terms of the staff recommendation, even a 30 percent density bonus would take us up to 24, which would be somewhat of a compromise between the 20 and the 28. The original application pushing the 70 percent density bonus allowed under the PUD density bonus overlay code would have taken us up to 32 units in the original application. I discussed this with the owner of the property, and I said, "The envelope's being pushed pretty far at 32. I recommend we pull back to 28, which is only really a 40 percent density bonus, given that we're providing almost 70 percent open space under the code, as allowed." So I'm a little confused on that particular issue. The letter that the asequias, that he read into the minutes, we have an additional or a newer letter from President Suazo from the commission that I would like to introduce, dated February 24th, 2015, and we discussed some additional things. I don't know if I should put it in the, pass it around now, or add it to the application. It says what you talked about, but there's some additional concerns, and one additional thing that I volunteered to, Mr. Suazo was included in his letter, would be a maintenance agreement with the owner to make sure that the crossing of, the single crossing of the asequia had a plan for maintenance, and making sure that the beginning and the end of the water season, that the access and the throughness of that 36-inch culvert or larger maintained and be cleaned at all times, so nothing can get stuck in there. So we will, I don't know if you want me to submit this or resubmit it, but I have an updated letter from the Asequia de los Levatos from them. Can I, should I pass this around, or just admit it as an article?
I think we had it in our pack, in the green packet that was delivered last month.
Just an updated letter we can add to the packet, because I know this is not going to be settled at this one meeting. We have time to resubmit that.
Is it a new letter from what we got in our packet?
Yes, it is. It's an improved letter, or a, it's actually a signed letter by the Asequia Commission. The one that you have in front of you was not quite signed.
That's correct.
So would you like a copy to see this now?
Sure.
I have a few copies.
Mr. Yarvitz, just, Mr. Chairman, it is in our package that we got last month for the meeting that we had to postpone.
What was it, but was it signed by the...
Yes.
You have the February 24th letter?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It was in the package on, yeah, I thought for the March meeting.
Thank you, I wasn't quite sure what the overlap on that was. Excuse me. Also, in the staff report, I want to add the word that Mr. Bellis read into the minutes that was not actually in the written here. Under number three, that the traffic study be required identifies the impact at both entrance-exit points and the intersection of La Posta and Ranchitos, with consideration given to the possible inclusion of an XL and Dcel lane. He read that into the minutes. I would like you to note that on the, on your letter of recommendation also, because if the traffic study does not warrant an XL and a Dcel lane, then I'm finding it that you are overriding a traffic engineer's decision to include one, and if that's the case, I'd like that to be officially done, rather than just done by staff recommendation. Let's see here, staff recommendation to approve with conditions. Most of the other stuff on here, I think, I thought we laid out the mix of 1, 2, and 3 bedrooms in the application. Your question of what we need to agree to or not, is that not in the application? Was that my error?
It's in the application.
It's in the application, so I don't...
22, 2 bedrooms.
Correct, correct. We already have a recommended, so the final mix, we've already presented to you, so I don't know what number four means on the staff recommendation. The identification of the ownership rental arrangements needs to be part of any approval. I don't know what that means. The apartments are going to be owned by a single entity, and the common maintenance will be taken care of by the owner of that, and I don't know whether or not he needs an agreement with himself, but we're happy to comply with that. I'm not sure what item number five means. Do you need to see copy of the leases? I'm not sure that's your purview or not, but we'll probably, at some point in time, a year or two from now, if this project gets built, provide them. If we reduce the number of units, as Commissioner Durham noted, we, if we agree on something here to go forward conditionally with X number of units, I would hope that you would say "conditional upon an updated site plan" to be approved, rather than the one that's in here. I don't want exactly what you said to be, to be using this one as an approval would not work, but we can accommodate an improved site plan to meet with a conditional of approval if we get to that point tonight. So my only, my only issue is, one, I concur with the requirement for a traffic plan. I disagree with the total number of units, as when we originally came here for a zone change to get maximum density out of a repurposing of a property, the suggestion to go to a PUD density overlay, as we did follow the rules, is currently being denied, and I don't quite understand that, and for even any density increase for what we're doing. So I disagree with that particular point in terms of the total number of units. The traffic study, you're, you may, you may ask that, you may ask for that at any point in any project.
Excuse me, Mr. Yarvitz. Yes, Mr. Pollard?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I...
Go ahead.
I think we're getting down too deep into the details, and we're not answering the question that perhaps you can address. You've made an application for a planned unit development. So what we're discussing is, under the normal, the present zoning conditions, you can have 19 or 20 units on the site.
Correct.
And you could probably, under the right conditions, get somewhere between 32, 28, 24, some bonus density.
Correct.
For the owner. In granting a planned unit development density bonus, it's usually given in exchange for meeting certain criteria in the plan. So I think that, before you get into all of the rest of these, the... So I think that before you get into all of the rest of these discussions, you, for example, what I mean is that you could build your 20 units tomorrow without having to do traffic studies and without having to do anything else and probably without a lot of the conditions that you're going to be going through here right now.
You promise?
No. But you could do a lot of what you could do, well, there's, you're not asking for a change, is that correct? To zoning?
No, not asking for zone change, correct.
If you did that.
Correct.
So I guess what I'm saying, I'd like to see if you couldn't make a case so the commission could try to come to some general feeling. Are we talking about a recommendation for 20 units or 24 or 28 or 32? Let's try to, that seems to me to be the essential point. That affects traffic, that affects everything else that's going on.
I, I would prefer not to make the numbers decision until we see the traffic study.
The traffic study is based upon the numbers. You can't do it-
Mark, you know the numbers. Proposed 20, you want 28. Your engineer can run the numbers at both and it's not a big deal.
Correct.
Secondly, the PUD is supposed to provide creative layout and clustering, and what I see here is a long linear line of buildings and parking, the front, the property line. I don't see a whole lot of creativity in there. A lot of communities don't allow more than 12 units to be accessed by a single point of access, and we've got, not Taos, Taos is different, I acknowledge that, but what I'm saying is you've got about twice as many units on a single point of access as, is allowed in a lot of other communities. And I don't see a whole lot of creativity to this, to this layout. As Jim mentioned, there were certain criteria that if we were to grant you a PUD approval and a density bonus approval, we've got to see some creativity. And to me, this doesn't represent a whole lot of creativity. It looks like the cheapest, fastest way to get it as many units on the site as possible. I've got a question about your conceptual landscape plan. You show a bridge over the wetlands, you show benches, you show playing fields. I'm troubled by the word concept. Is this something that-
By the word what?
By the word concept. Is this what you're going to bring to the sta, to staff when you have your final sap, site plan? You're going to show these improvements?
We have to do a full landscape plan as a final-
I know you do, but are you going to include benches, bridges, and playing fields?
Yes.
As we were led to believe?
Yes.
Okay. I just need to clarify that based on some of the other confusion that your applications have created in the past. You, there was something you said in your presentation that I'm spacing out and I apologize for that, but you bring us a concept, it gets approved, and then we just need some sort of guarantee that this open space is going to be usable, whether you get your bonus or not. You know, you're putting 20, between 20 and 28 units on there, and there's two and three bedroom units, there's probably going to be children, and I'd love to see you follow through on what you're saying you're going to do in terms of the open space.
Well, we actually have plans for doing some other things with the landscaping, but we weren't ready to present a landscape plan and until we get past this phase, there is no point in throwing good money after a landscape plan that we'd have to throw out and redesign to make this creative. The word creative, I find it interesting in the sense of, this is, we, the people involved with designing this spent a lot of time coming up with a simple version of creativity. I don't know how to define your version of it, but to maximize the open space for the tenants in the property, we came up with this simple mechanism. To spread the houses out or do something else would decrease the open space quite a bit, and I don't understand you saying that this is or is not creative. I find that difficult to understand. We did not draw a complete roadway that is just a racing lane. The driveway, as you can see, has bends in it to prevent any kind of, it has natural traffic slowdown. We created this such that everybody in these apartment units can walk onto the open space without crossing any traffic. The other set of plans that we looked at previously had kids crossing traffic lanes to get to the open space. We removed that safety issue. We think this is really a creative use of the PUD, and I don't understand your comments about creative or not, since that is totally subjective. I would perhaps like you to be more specific with what you think is-
I think I was pretty clear about the linear nature, the wall of construction that's being built.
They're offset.
The very limited stagger, you know?
The purpose was to create maximum open space for the families-
And that was one of my concerns, and that's why I asked you about the open space. Are those concepts going to come to fruition?
Well, it's all, staff will be enforcing the permitting of all of this. I assume that they can deal with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry to, this, this is an application that's going to raise many, many questions. It's going to continue to go. It's a problem property. I'd like to ask, because we're talking about the number of units, whether it's 20 units or 32 units, doesn't make any difference. To me, it, on this question, I'm not certain that I see that fourplexes are allowed in the R4 zone, and I wonder if that's within our purview here in granting a PUD to be able to change that. The PUD, or the R4 zone, I think allows a duplex, a townhouse, a condominium, or an apartment, a two-family attached or semi- attached residence.
Read the last one there.
Such as a duplex.
Keep going.
A townhouse, a condominium, or apartment.
Okay.
Is permitted as principal uses.
These are apartments as permitted as, as uses.
There's another spot here which I still don't clear, I'll ask for clarification from the staff. I don't see that a fourplex is clearly allowed, and maybe they can help me. We can get past that point, we can figure out how many units can go on this property.
I think another point that needs to be done, and we'll get to your question, is how you calculated the density bonus and how the town calculates it. That's where, I, I think that, that's a big issue. I, I think, to me, that's the bigger issue to try to go forward with what we're looking at here.
Okay. Ask them how they calculated. I had a architect there.
Because I, because I did read somewhere where wetland, it's buildable, buildable space in the calculation and not, I, I think you're looking at the calculation of acreage, which is the four-point, whatever acres it is, and I don't know if that's correct or it's only on the site that has buildable property that can be, where you can build on the site. Wetlands, I don't know if that can be factored in or not, and that, that's my question, I guess, or clarification I want.
Let me tell you what we used, I don't know what the town did. The green, all of the green area was the calculated open space and the, as not allowed in the code, the, the parking and the drive lanes and the footprints of the buildings are not allowed in the calculation. Everything else is, as I read you the definition of usable open space, and the architect who put this together came up with 69% based upon those calculations, given I center the code and the definitions, and that's what I came back with. I didn't calculate it. I don't know if the town has done its own calculation or not.
Mr. Bellis, is there?
Yeah, if, in the application, the definition reads, "In calculating the allowable density and density bonus," and unfortunately, we don't have the clearest language, but I'll tell you how we interpreted it. "The following procedures shall be followed. The allowable density shall first be calculated by determining the density which could be achieved on the developable property through a conventional development, which complies with all applicable laws and regulations, including but not limited to town, state, and federal regulations pertaining to the development within wetlands, flood plains, and hazardous areas," and pertaining to means you can't build within them. So even if we were to take this as an R4, we would go to the site plan that you have here and first subtract the wetland area and the utility easements from that before we would calculate whether you had sufficient setbacks and placement to fit that 20 units on this property. So, and then calculating the density bonus by determining what is open space, we would immediately then, because those are not developable even under the normal zoning, subtract those areas from the area you're setting aside. So you'd take the parking lots, the wetlands, the utility easements, the Asequia out of the calculation. So I think the difficulty is, is, as Mr. Yarvitz said, is, and this is a point that we have often with developers, is they're like, "Well, it's part of the land and if I'm preserving it," and I, and in fairness to Mr. Yarvitz, I think he did say at the work session, that he had a goal of sort of cleaning out and revitalizing that wetland area so it could actually become a recreation area. And, and I think that is laudable and, and somehow should be rewarded rather than just leaving it as a swamp that the kids fall into. But at the same time, it's not a buildable area, and I think that's pretty well defined because I used to do the floodplain determinations for the county and-
What would, excuse me?
Can I ask?
What would, Rick, what would the number allowed be using your interpretation? In other words, if you deducted the non-buildable area and took a conservative approach to the density calculation?
You know, that's one of the reasons I was late in talking to the attorney.
Okay.
I'm going to give you a frustrating answer was, which is, it's not the town's responsibility to look at the developer's property and tell him what he can get as a bonus for using that property. It's up to the developer to make the case to the town as to what he feels is the usable, buildable property. And I know while it's frustrating you and it frustrates me, the reason is because then if we make a determination based on this and somebody else challenges it, that the developer's relying on our interpretation and we're taking on a legal liability that really isn't ours to, to do.
Chairman, if I may? Mr. Yarvitz?
I just want to go back to the inconsistent language in the definition of open space usable in the code versus what you just said.
Again, we can go back and forth in interpretation. I, I agree, I agree what you're saying. Mr. Patterson?
My difficulty in having any of these conversations is that we really don't have a viable site plan to evaluate. So I know the, the quoted provisions that were handed in in the application, you know, say that for a PUD, there's a very specific site plan definition. It's quoted, section 16 dot 20 dot 080. And it's hard for us to have any kind of meaningful conversation without a site plan that we can actually look at and evaluate. And I don't think the, the site plan that's in the packet doesn't give us enough information to even have these conversations.
Yes.
I would add too that you're requesting variances and those haven't been discussed, and I think those need to play into our decision about whether we want to grant any density over and above the existing allowable density depending on your variances. Where are those setback variances you're requesting and why are you at?
The PUD, are you saying that the PUD requires us to delineate each of the variances required?
No, I'm not. I'm asking you what the variances are. Staff mentioned three sets of variances.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I'll answer the question. My past experience with PUDs on the commission, yes, you should be bringing us some documentation that delineates.
Which variant?
All variances, where they are and what they are.
Okay.
For consideration.
And all those, all those definitions are in 16.20.080. So it lists everything that's, needs to be quantified on a site plan that's a scalable document.
The, the cart before the horse issue here is, is how do we go forward with the documentation you're requesting, which is absolutely required? Is it considerable expense to do all of the grading and drainage? I think that's what you're asking for.
No.
No? What are you talking about? Give me an, then-
16.20.080.
I don't have that in front of me.
It's, it's-
Okay, I'll go through it in terms of-
Doesn't require grading and drainage.
I'm sorry?
Does not require grading and drainage. It does require you to identify what you intend to do with grading and drainage, but it does not require grading and drainage planned by a civil engineer.
Okay.
Mr. Yarvitz, what I would like to do at this time, there's people in the audience, I would like them to, if any want to speak, to speak, and then we'll, the commission will have some dialogue and then bring the applicant back out to answer some of those questions or the town to, to speak to any of the issues that we, we might have.
Chairman, if I may, I have one more important question.
For Mr. Yarvitz?
Yes, please.
Okay.
At the beginning of the write-up on page 26, there's a, there's a paragraph there that says, "Included in this application is a subdivision for each fourplex to be on its own lot."
That should not be there. I'm sorry, that should be removed.
Okay.
That was four applications ago and we've taken it off.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, that was part of the confusion.
Okay.
That phrase in there as to the ownership.
I understand, that's not part of it.
We presume based on our conversations, it was common ownership, so we just need to clarify that in our record.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any, let's, let's see what, who happened, the audience will have more dialogue. From the audience, is there anybody here to speak for or against the, the project? Okay. Whoever wants to come up first. There's three individuals. State your name and you'll get sworn in.
Sworn at or sworn in?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
You state your name, that's our record.
My name is Mario Suazo, and I'm the president of the Los Lopatos Asequia. And basically, we became aware of this project probably back in August or so, and the Asequia de los Lopatos, just by way of background, irrigates a lot of the, what we call the greenbelt. It originates there on the Rio Pueblo, near Upper Ranchitos, and then comes south, goes south, and near La Loma, and it actually crosses the road, crosses Ranchitos Road and near that Kit Carson substation that you might have seen there on Ranchitos and into that kind of wetland area. Then it traverses going west and it basically joins the proposed development, probably for a good distance on the south side and on the west side. It crosses underneath the road, La Posta Road, and it crosses Comino del Medio, and it goes into Judy Friday's property. And then it continues west, and basically there's a diversion point where it becomes tailwater or it's diverted to another long lateral. That's just by way of saying that, you know, this ditch has a fair number of users and this is actually the main ditch, and in a year like this year, there's probably going to be anywhere from a foot and a half to two feet of water in that ditch. So we do have some concerns regarding this proposed development. Some of those were already brought up by Mr. Bellis and Mr. Yarvitz. Certainly, the fact there's going to be a housing development and a fair amount of traffic and people in that area that enjoys the ditch. We do have concerns about whatever culvert or bridge or whatever is installed there to handle the traffic that ought also be adequate and probably engineered, whether it's a culvert or a bridge. And also, Mr. Yarvitz mentioned that he'd be willing to do a maintenance agreement. I think that's something we'd be interested in having done or having the developer do if it, this project does go forward. Some of the other concerns that we have is that erosion and drainage, you know, when you have a lot of houses in that area, the, you know, whether it's paved or unpaved and people living there, we don't, we try to, want to have that, that erosion and whatever drainage comes off that development minimized. I'm not sure exactly how it got brought in forcing that, but that's certainly a concern of ours. The other concern we have is sufficient access, and I think that's kind of provided for in statute, so hopefully we don't have to deal with, you know, trying to squeeze a backhoe in through a couple of houses or somebody's backyard. That's just an issue that's been brought up and it's actually, I think in your package is a concern. Another concern that we have basically is the safety of the residents. Because the ditch, there's a fair, that ditch is really in a large part of that property, it could be an attractive nuisance to kids and other people to play in that ditch when there's water flowing. Now, I'm not sure what we can really do about that, but I'm just saying it's something that probably needs to be addressed or at least considered if this project goes forward. So those are the primary concerns that we have, and just to say that the Asequia de los Lopatos completes its 300th anniversary this year of continuous use, so that's something we like to keep and, keep the water flowing, so to speak, so. Those are my basic, basic concerns is just to protect the ditch. Stand for questions.
So, just so I understand, the association, as long as those areas are addressed, you have no problems with the project itself or any major issue that you would think that would be?
Well, as far as protecting the ditch, now whether this is a good idea or a bad idea or a good location, that's a whole separate issue, but, you know, if it does go forward, I think our concern is if permission is granted to build this development, I think our concern is to have the protections for the ditch somehow stipulated or made part of the conditions of approval.
I have a question also for you.
Yes, Mr. Sir.
Knowing that this is a ditch that's been in place for so long and, and of course, there's going to be a culvert 36 inches that's going to be put in that area, do you think that's sufficient enough to allow the flow of that water through that ditch for that access that would be off of Ranchitos Road? I kind of see that as an issue, and I think that, you know, perhaps maybe a bridge that would allow greater flow rather than something restricted to 36 inches may be more appropriate.
I think that's something, one of the things that was brought up, I think, is that we asked that this be an engineered or studied.
asked that this be an engineered or studied, whatever the proposed solution is for this bridge or crossing, now whether it's a culvert or a bridge, that it be based on an engineering study.
Thank you. Question for you. Mr. Suazo, you, you mentioned the, the long nature of your exposure to this property.
Right.
I don't really remember in anything that I saw whether or not this is a paved parking area or gravelled parking area. But certainly I would hope that the developer would do something to try and keep the water, surface water from coming from the property into the ditch. What I wanted to address was the safety issue that you referred to. Have you had any experience with any other developments in Taos where you've faced a similar problem, where you've got this great long length and a lot of housing and?
I'm, I'm not aware of a main ditch or an asequia being located to a high-density housing area where it's all concentrated. Further up the ditch, there are concerns where their neighbors go in there and throw their mattresses in the ditch or try and, you know, make a swimming pool out of it or something like that. So there is, there is that issue. Now, when you have, how many, 60 people or so in this one development, then it could be kind of an attractive place to go play. So I just, I just want to point that out.
Yeah, I guess I was a little, when I heard you say that, it made sense to me. But on the other hand, trying to make that safe for the people in, in that area goes against leaving it open for maintenance and having access for equipment and everything else to work from. So I just wondered if you'd had seen it anywhere else.
I have not seen how that issue had been addressed anywhere else.
All right.
One comment also is that kids will be kids and I did play in that ditch at one point or another.
Mr. Romero?
He had one of the mattresses. With this ditch, I, I mean, I was looking at the plans, I don't know if this is a question for you or not, but does it border the property line itself going along the La Posta Road or anything?
Yes, it's, well, I'm not sure if I've seen the latest rendition of the proposed project, but the ditch really goes along the perimeter of that property and it does border the roadway, so.
I'm looking at the picture now.
I'm sure. Mr. Romero, what was your question again?
Just if it came along the, as what it appears here is that it looks like it goes along the property line with a proposed parking and stuff, is that, unless I'm looking at it differently here.
I think it's. Sorry, looking at this right. Get oriented. It's to go here, doesn't it? This is that wetland.
Yep.
Yeah.
Beautiful house.
Right. So it does go at the very bottom.
Okay, so I am looking at the.
Yes, you're looking at that right. And then it goes this way till it crosses underneath the road. So there's fair distance of this ditch on that property.
Okay, I've got a question for Mr. Yarvitz afterwards as far as the distance from the parking tube.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Struck, where you want to speak?
Did you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Struck.
Thank you.
I was here before on the issue that we had from going from an R4 to an R6. And it was turned down and left at an R4. Going back years, that area where the building was zone R4 because of the lady that used to own the, had trailer park there. And I think it's straight into the, that's the reason it was R4 because she had to be grandfathered in. That was one of the reasons. Later on, her nephew took over at the property and he wanted it changed to commercial. And it came through the planning zone, I think it was in the planning zone at that time, years back. Anyway, it was turned down and left R4 with an understanding that Mrs. Baca at that time would, would not be able to add more than two more trailers to that property. That's the way it stayed up throughout the years. Now, it was left, R6 was turned down and it's left at an R4 now. I haven't had no problem with an R4, but that's the first time you see an R4, an R6 anywhere with a, with a bonus on it. I'd never seen it before. I've seen it in an R14. But an R4, it's an R4 or it's an R6. And basically, it would look at a 20 to, adding on eight more, eight more units on it, it's looking like more and more like an R6. R6 consists of 24 units. Now, if go with a bonus on his, it's going to go up to 28. So it's more than an R6. And the R6 was turned down on the last meeting. Oh, that's one of the concerns I have. I have no problem with the, with the R4 that is left the way it is. Because basically, the, the commission or even the town cannot turn it down as an R4. But you can add restrictions to it. For example, you were talking about the ditch. That ditch runs through the back of the Gentet family, most of it is there. First of all, my, my, that's me Struck, but I represent all the Gentets. It's all Gentet area in that corner. Goes back to, phew, 100 years back. Instead of all the Gentets coming in and stating their opinion and repeating what I'm repeating, it's easier just to, I got elected to do that. Anyway, my question is that as an R4, it's basically, it can be approved as an R4. Now, never seen it with a bonus on it. The only time I ever saw it with a bonus was an R14 and I think it's still in the, that you can have bonus on, on the O14. Somewhere along the line, it's there. But not an R4, an R6 or any other one. Because what we're doing is, especially in this part of town, it's the old part of Taos. Sooner or later, for example, in a traffic study, it needs to be done completely. With the town, the highway department and the county, everything that comes together because it's the old part of town. Those roads, those roads now cannot handle that much traffic, especially in that corner that's there. There has to be done on it. The question is that on the other side of that road, the Vehils have, where he has his cows and all that, Antonio Vehil. Now, I have to represent him, him and I are first cousins. So he's a concern about it because he says, what happens if I try and develop the same thing next year? And then we have a bigger mess on that, on the roads. Well, that problem is going to end up is in the town's problem in the future, two years from now, five years from now. It needs to be, it's going to be, it's going to have to be addressed since now. Can't wait any longer because it's going to develop somewhere along the line. But as far as I'm concerned, you cannot go, you cannot go from an, for an R4 with a bonus and, and it's basically, it's going to turn out to be an R6. And the R6 was turned down a couple of months back, I think, on the last meeting. So I don't, I don't really think that that should be done. And let's just leave it an R4 with a, with a 20, I think it's 20 units and with a traffic study, intensive traffic study on it.
Thank you, Mr. Struck.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for?
As far as the Gentet family and the Vehil families and stuff, are they opposed to the project or are they for it or with what conditions?
Well, this was discussed, when I was in the planning zoning or in the city council, we discussed, they would agree to leave it as an R4. For a simple reason that Ms. Baca that lived there was related to the Gentet family. So to have peace in the family, they agreed to do it as an R4, but she could only add two more mobile homes or trailers that she had to let park. That was the reason.
Mr. Struck, but as to this project here, how, are they opposed to it or are they for?
They're not opposed to, they're not opposed to it as an R4, period.
Oh, okay.
And the same thing with the ditch. It runs along the Gentet family, basically on the back part of, which was the Gentet, John, I think it's John, that owns that part. So that's where it's coming from. And I, and I, by experience, building in the planning zoning or building in the city council, I knew I had come across times that the project was approved and later on, four or five years later, the town lined it up having to fix that problem on the traffic study to re, to redo the whole thing again, which has been done by a developer, not by the, by the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Struck. Any, anybody else?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth under penalty of law?
No.
Please state your name.
My name is Jerome Lucero and I live at the end of Peralta Lane. And I just have one question basically and it's, I belong, I, I'm on the town water system and in the afternoons, like in two o'clock sometime in there, the water pressure is way down. And you're welcome to come to my house, check it out. It could be a problem internally to my house, but I doubt it because my mom hooked up to the town about 15 years ago when our well collapsed. I think you need to consider the 20 or 28 houses, how it'll affect the water pressure in the area. I mean, that's a concern that I have right now. I mean, the water pressure is low. And if it was an internal problem, I think that the pressure would be low all the time. But it's, it's low just in the afternoons and then the rest of the time it's okay. So I, I caution you on that. And then as far as the, I do have a concern overall as to what's decided by this commission and how they hold the developer accountable. It's pretty easy to come in here and say, we're going to do this, this and this and this. But who follows through and makes sure that the Asequia is taken care of? And I have experience, we're in litigation now with the town of Taos over the spring ditch. The planning and zoning was completely circumvented in that case and the town manager signed off on that permit to, to build the central station over our diversion point. So all of those things I think you need to keep in mind and whatever is decided at this, by this commission, I think you need to make sure that what is said here as part of the approval of the development is actually done. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lucero. Is there any other individual that would like to speak? Is there, yeah, there's one more. All right.
I swear to God, I'm bad. My name's Mary Gray and actually today is the one-year anniversary of my husband and I moving to Taos. And the first letters that we got about this development were before we ever moved here. And I called the planning commission and said, what's this about? Can you tell me? Well, they didn't know how many stories. I still don't know how tall these proposed two-story developments are. At the last meeting, it wasn't clear whether they were going to be condominiums or apartments. And I think that's the reason why the, the commission had questions about who is going to be responsible for the, the common area maintenance. And I assume that you have now determined that it's going to be rental?
Just apartment rentals.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know if this is, is it legal to ask? But are these low level, mid level?
Market rate. Market rate, no affordable housing subsidies.
Well, we have that right across the street. I just, I'm not familiar with what market rate is. All I know is that everyone in town seems to be seeking an apartment for less than $1,000 a month. And I assume that's not market rate.
We have to answer your question here.
Okay. Okay. But I just wanted to thank the commission because in the year that, since we first heard of this, a little bit of progress has been made. And I really appreciate the fact that it, it might just be 20 instead of 32 because traffic study or whatever, you take your life in your hands when you try to turn off Carbalha onto Ranchito's. People barrel 50 miles an hour down that road, you can't see them coming and it's a gamble every time you pull out. And I'm from a big city, I'm used to major traffic, but I'm not used to blind traffic. And you were there today, you said there weren't many cars. You need to come at five o'clock, it's wall to wall.
Okay, that's probably true.
My neighbor said, you know, you can stand out, out in your front and see everybody you've ever met in the town of Taos. And it's true, everyone uses that as a bypass to downtown. And at times it's bumper to bumper. And the police have a heyday out there. They stop people and sometimes we have to wait to get out of our driveway until they're through getting a ticket. But it would be good to lower the speed limit on Ranchito's at any end. But anyway, thank you very much and thank you. You're, you're all doing a great job.
Thank you. So let me ask the commission at this point, would we like, would you like to speak?
Yes. If I don't, Jerome will be upset at me tomorrow when I walk up dogs. Baca Park. And I don't want Jerome upset at me.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth under penalty of law? Please state your name.
Paul Figueroa. I lived for many years in Charleston, South Carolina. Lowlands, wetlands were extremely important to preserve and conserve and respect as that city and area grew and expanded over the decades that I lived there. I'd like to state that I'm in favor of the staff's proposal here. I was very concerned when the unit development was up to, what was it, 28? And, and I think 20 is, is very appropriate given the R4 zoning. And I, I do agree with what's been stated about the Asequia and in particular the concern that with traffic coming in and out of that development, that oil, gas, debris, whatever, will accumulate and find their way into that very precious water system. And I think the developer has stated that he wants to work with, with the Asequia to see that that's maintained. And, and I hope policed that, that infractions that might occur are identified and addressed. But I think I'll just close with, with this. And I don't know too much about planning and zoning and all that you go through and I really appreciate the staff and the volunteer commissioners for your work. But I did do a little homework before I came. And so I know we're talking about development standards, 16.16, 100.5, whatever that means, but at the final end. And this is something that I think we all need to adhere to because it's not just now, it's future, it's generations to come. It's the way the town and this place will evolve. Planned unit development standards, and I'm sorry to maybe talk like a school teacher or something, but in addition to all other requirements of this title, if a planned unit development is proposed in the R4 zone, then such planned unit development shall meet or exceed all planned unit development standards as set in section blah, 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 blah. So coming to creativity, coming to the efforts of the developer, you've got to exceed what's there. You've got to be pro- You've got to be proactive in taking that wonderful piece of four-point, whatever acres it is, with a beautiful wet lens as I drive by on Ranchito's road, and all the little nooks and crannies of the streetscape when I turn right onto Medea, is that it, Jerome? And then left onto another road to get to Albertson's, or turn right at that Y intersection to get to Fred Baca, where I look forward to the 1, 300th anniversary of Los Lovatos Ditch on September 20th at Fred Baca Park. You're all invited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a commission, do you, would you, do you, would you like to speak to the applicant again and ask some more questions, or to the town and ask them questions, or do you want to have a dialogue amongst ourselves? And, and take it from there. I, I do want to share that the agenda indicates, what is being submitted to us at this time, so we don't get into the weeds of trying to figure certain things within the, the project itself, is requesting a planned unit development overlay with a 69% usable open space and density, density bonus of 4.83-plus acres. So that's what's on the agenda for us to decide on. I don't, I mean, I think we need to give some direction to the applicant if, if, if we're looking at something, if we're going to turn this down and look at something else, but that's what's on the agenda for action for this commission, so just so you understand that.
Could I ask for clarification?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. So I guess we could proceed with considering approval, considering disapproval, consider a continuance for some reason? Is it also possible that rather than a continuance to a particular date, is there any advantage to the applicant at this point, having heard all of this discussion, to just ask that the application be tabled to some point in the future? Or is that, is that an option to us?
Well, you know, I think everything's on the table that we can discuss. I'm just, this, this applicant has been since, I think, August of last year, and, and you know, we're already in April.
Right.
So if we're going to suggest a tabling or-
No, I'm not. I'm asking, can he request it at this point? Would he like to say that?
Now, he has a question in reference to what you've asked, so if you come up to the podium and respond to that.
Well, being the messenger, I hope you put all your guns away. And my response to the owner of the property will be to discuss all of the sensitivity of the issues that were presented here, and I would like to ask him how we'd like to proceed. His options clearly are, whatever you decide, he can either amend the application, so not to have to go through the whole process from the beginning again, to accommodate some of your requests, accept your, or accept whatever you say, and appeal your decision if he does not like what you make in your decision. I don't have the ability to answer that tonight, but I think that my recommendation to the owner of the property would be to discuss the issues of the traffic study, the density bonus, the number of units, the whole nature of all of the things that were brought up here today, because that's how I operate in terms of finally getting some real feedback on this project, having gone through four or five of these meetings with not much feedback at all. And so now that I have this information for what your issues are, and maybe it is as simple, let's just go with the R4 and do 10 duplexes and apply for a permit, I'm not sure that makes any sense, because it takes away the ability to create this maximum open space. It really creates more of a unfortunate cookie-cutter-style design. I don't know. I would have to go back and explore which variances we're looking for on site plan and separation or, or from, there is no lot lines here, since we removed all the talk about a subdivision. So the distance between buildings, I think, which we have on here is 20 feet, according to the fire code. The distance from the Aseca, I, I, I don't have that measurement in front of me, but I know it's going to be substantial. The question of doing it more creatively can be addressed, and let him decide whether or not he wants to pursue this through the channels, or redesign this to accommodate all of the questions here. I don't really know, but the one thing I do know that I would like, perhaps, is that if I can convince him to address these things, reduce the density, what I don't know is if we go to 20 units, or whether or not he argues for a 20% density bonus, they, I, I know that we can come up with 20% real open space out of this project that qualifies under all conditions to get to 24. Maybe he says, "Don't bother, let's just do the 20." I don't have an answer for all of that, given all of this feedback. And I, I have not seen in this, very often, the, the usage of the cluster overlay density bonus is very tricky. There's not much history in terms of reviewing it and how that works, and I understand the difficulty. I'm reading the definitions, and he has a different set of definitions, and they're both in the book. So I don't have any good answers, but I would like not to have to start from scratch with whatever we do. So I'm hoping that whatever decision you make allows us to either accept and appeal your decision, or resubmit a set of plans that deals with all the questions and issues and the sensitivity of the neighborhood. I didn't quite know that the R4 was accommodated, because Ms. Baca was a cousin to the mayor back in the days and got her R4 permission. The owner of the property had no idea. There is no covenants recorded that says you can only add two more trailers here. That does not exist. So the owner who bought the property seven or eight years ago does not have this history of how he obtained an R4 property, given, the neighborhood has, again, across the street and other places, on one side, there's one house on 20 acres, and across the street is a de facto R8 or R14 in the county housing. So it's an interesting, it's the end of the town limits at that point. The water issue I discussed with Mr. Lucero, that I think that when I spoke to French, Mr. French, about the, at our first DRC meeting back in August of last year or something, he said we would have no, no trouble with sewer and water and fire hydrants all there on the property. I would like to have him address his issue of water pressure, not my concern. My biggest concern is whether we have one or two entrances, and whether it improves the community design there by having the ingress and egress onto Ranchitos and La Posta or not. I don't have a good answer for that. So I think the traffic study might be the next step, to ask him to look at 20, 24, and 28 units, if it's not cost prohibitive, and maybe we can make some decisions on that. And if I take away the access off of Ranchitos, it eliminates all the questions about the access and decel lane and all of that, and yes, it's, probably should be lower to, a lower speed limit there. And I also understand that the town is, currently have plans to rebuild the entire section from Ranchitos to, 240 on the other end, going from Carabahal, Camino del Medio, all the way to US 240, is that correct? How does that play into the situation? Is that something I shouldn't be talking about? I've heard about it from several sources. Is that something the town is doing regardless of what we do? I don't know. Part of the PUD does require a bit of a quid pro quo somewhere, and I, Mr., I talked to Mr. French Espinoza, and he's desperate for additional widening of the Carabahal Street there, and we were willing to donate a portion of land to get that intersection fixed. It won't solve the problems that we all know are there, because it is probably the de facto bypass for the town, since that's what we have. So I would, I mean, if I can, if you can make a motion to how you want to proceed, and let me say whether or not that's okay, I don't know how to deal with this. You can say whatever you want. We'll either appeal the decision, or come back with a much more reduced plan, more sensitive to the neighborhood. I don't know how to do that, given what your choices are either.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, Mr. Be.
Mark, how much time do you need to meet with your owner and to come up with some responses to us?
Good question. He'll probably want to know the minute I walk out of this meeting what occurred. I will relate to him that 20 units would probably be no problem, and suggest we go ahead with that. If he says no, what do we have to do in a design framework to get the allowed density bonus in the code to make it work under a PUD and meet all those variances? He might ask me to do that. Maybe 24 is the compromise. I, I really don't know. How much time? I'll probably find out within, probably by Monday, if not this evening.
Okay, great. So in other words, to put it on the agenda, we need your approval of your date. When you get it, let us know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I suggest that, is, just as a discussion, not anything to nail down here at this moment in time, I think I'd have no difficulty in looking at the fact that there's not an acceptable site plan presented with this application, that I might be able to characterize the application as incomplete at this point in time, and that it should be continued until the next meeting. I think the applicant is perfectly able to decide whether he wants to attend that meeting, or withdraw his application, or get some work done and proceed on that basis. I don't think we're doing anything special to do that, just for the, the commission to consider.
Okay.
Can we, can we also factor in the time required for the traffic study? Because I think we made it pretty obvious that we all have traffic concerns, and we want to study.
I, I would think that under this, under this condition, Commissioner Durham, he could, the applicant could just ask for a continuance one more month or two more months at that point in time. Looking at the application in front of us, I think we could probably make a determination that it's incomplete and continue it to some future date, which I think we have to determine a date.
Right.
Can I ask a simple question here? If the applicant decides to go the simpler route of taking the R4 property and doing 20 maximum units on the property, only doing duplexes and trying to stay out of the PUD, will a traffic study still be required?
How do you exceed, does 20 exceed the density?
19.
19.8.
Which translates to 19, or I'm going to object.
If you, if you don't, if you don't exceed the density, you don't need to go through a planning and zoning process, developing the R4.
Does it get rounded up or rounded down? I'm just asking.
No. I've never gotten one rounded up.
Round up to 30. With all due respect, I, I think you've gone, you've, you've presented some schematic plans for the development, and you've said that throughout this process, you haven't gotten much feedback. Without, without a site plan that meets the requirements of the applications, we can't have a meaning discussion, meaningful discussion about any of these requirements, not a single one, really. You can flush them out, and you can get them on the table, and get them out in the public, which is what you've done, and I think that's pretty meaningful feedback. But, but until you go through the work that's required for a PUD in expectation of the, the benefits you get out of a PUD, I think you have to put the work in to, to fulfill those requirements. And I'm not really willing to even really look at the application until we get a site plan that fulfills the requirements.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Lucero.
I think one of the things that I'd like to see, and, and just feedback for you, is that I think, you know, the neighborhood is concerned about it, we're concerned about it. I think as perhaps a meeting point, or an area where we can all meet together, would be probably considering going with the 24-unit project rather than 28. And that kind of gives the developer a little bit more of what he wants rather than the 28. It also keeps the neighborhood, I think, somewhat, you know, happy with that as well. Obviously, the, the access and whatnot, and, and for me, the concern that I have is a 36-inch drainage.
Culvert.
Culvert, that's not, to me, I don't think that's appropriate. I think we need a bigger area that allows that filter to go through without, maybe a bridge or something like that, that would be more appropriate for that access that would go out into Ranchitos. So taking all of that into consideration, I think you should probably at least consider doing that, and appeasing everybody as a result.
The original conversation with the mayor, Doma, when we looked at the ditch and said, "Well, you probably need a 24-inch culvert," and I said, "How about a 36?" He said, "Well, that should do." I then had a conversation with Commissioner Suazo about this, and we're going to have it engineered to look at the Q factor of the high frequency of the ditch in flood seasons, and if we have to go to a 48, that won't, that's a non-issue. So we'll take care of that without question.
But I would like to see the two access and their access points.
You want to have dual ingress and egress?
That's something I'd love to see.
See, that was, that was part of our planning process that we went up and back with as a group before we presented the plan. We've had several iterations of this with one or two entrances, and how does that work, and what are the pros and cons of that? And we came up with this version from consensus standpoint. I'm not sure it's the best, but you, would you like that as, one of, some of the feedback is to have the ingress and egress doubled, like we have?
Right.
Okay, that's some good feedback there, as we go forward with this.
I, I just want to make a comment. We've been going back and forth. I'm assuming today or tonight, you've gotten a lot of information of what concerns or areas to address, but I kind of concur with Mr. Patterson, that if we get a complete packet with the schematics, the plans, everything we need to make a viable decision, I think we can get to a point of approval. But it's tough when we get parts of it, and then you share what, what the intent is, but it's really not put in, in a, in a complete formal package for us to make a decision and have a, a viable discussion for our decision-making. So, you know, I, I don't know what the group feels they want to do at this point, but-
Do you want to make a motion?
Mr. Patterson has a, a motion that he would like to submit.
I'll make a motion that we continue this to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second to motion.
Any discussion or additions? All in favor, signify, well, let's do a roll call.
Could I ask a quick question? If Mark's not ready to go forward at the next meeting, does he have the ability to request a continuance?
Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to look out for-
Again, it depends on how long the continuance, I mean, after some point, you need to make a decision on it and resubmit it again, if, if need be. But I, yeah, there's still some, some flexibility and time that we can-
I, just off the top of my head, if we are going forward with the traffic study to push the numbers, there's no way we'll have it done by the next meeting. But can I have until I get that decision to let the planning department know whether we continue it to the next month or the month after that? Is that an option?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, by law, we have to specify the date, time, and place that the meeting is continued to.
As long as this is a discussion period, if I might, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lucero's comment about a bridge seemed to get lost when it came across the room. It's still a culvert. I think Commissioner Lucero was also saying, "Consider something other than the size of a culvert," and that perhaps an engineered bridge-
Okay.
-considering the, the amount of traffic that's going to be going back and forth and doing that sort of thing. That's a, one of the creative approaches, I think, that could help fulfill your approach to a PUD. If, if I were advising your client, I'd say, "Go talk to the town about donating a piece of land," because although it might not affect all our delivery here, that's a creative approach to helping the community solve a problem with your piece of land. I'd look, you don't have many choices here on this. It's a very narrow strip of buildable land that you have here. You have to look for other ways to be creative. It's not necessarily the cluster. So I just suggest you discuss those.
I would like to get something from Mr. Espinoza in terms of what he actually needs, so we could deal with that. I've asked him a few times, and he says we're still working on it, so, all right, I, I understand that.
So next meeting, which is next month, 30 days from now, is that viable to, to address and, and do what needs to be done to be, to represent something to this commission?
My question is, when do I have to submit my documentation to, what is my deadline for submitting for year review prior to that meeting, then?
April 6.
April 6? The answer is no, I cannot make anything by April 6.
So-
So if you would give me two months, date specific-
Continuance to, that would be for the June's meeting? Or?
For the, for the May meeting, I have to submit all my documentation by April 6?
Yes.
I, I can't possibly do that. So I would ask then for a two-month continuation, if that's acceptable to you, then.
Now, there's, there's a motion on the table.
I would amend my motion to the date requested. I'll figure out what that is.
First Wednesday.
Would that be June?
I would amend my motion to continue this case to the next regularly scheduled meeting on June 3, 2015.
Would you modify the second?
I'll second.
Who, who did the second? Oh, you did, okay. Okay, there's a motion on the table. Will you please do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollard?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Chairman Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Durham?
Yes.
Commissioner De Bay?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lucero?
Yes. Okay. So it's pushed off for a couple of months. Thank you, Mr. Irvin.
No, thank you. I appreciate the conversation and the feedback and the sensitivity of what is not always known.
I would love to see this project go there, by the way.
No, I understand, and it's not your plain vanilla project in a plain vanilla neighborhood.
It would be a great project for a house.
Thank you, appreciate your support.
Next item on the agenda is matters from staff. Ms. Gonzalez is there, or Mr. Bellis, is there anything?
One question, does he have to re-notify us property owners again?
No.
No?
If we, if we, if, as long as we continue to a regularly scheduled date, then they don't have to re-notice. If we didn't...
But at least you notify property owners again, I'll be meeting.
I don't believe so.
Mark, how many property owners? Do you have 15?
And do you have a cost $6 dollar per 48 cents to notify one of those?
I think as long as you've, once you've notified and you're in meetings and we've made a decision to a next regularly scheduled date?
Yeah, there's no legal requirement, Mr. Chairman, but in this case, as a courtesy, the planning department will absorb the cost of notifying the adjacent property owners by first-class mail, not registered mail, if that's acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Strick.
Again, just to get through the agenda, matters from the staff. Mr. Bellis, do you have anything, or Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, Ms. Gonzalez had approached you about the idea of having another workshop in conjunction with the Historic Preservation Commission. Do we have a date on that yet?
Next week. If they, we would like to invite you guys to the meeting, to the Historic Preservation Commission meeting next week, Wednesday, the 8th.
There's two matters on there. One is proposal for a redesign, remodel by McDonald's that's currently there to make it fit more into the historic zone. And it's just a courtesy presentation. The second one is by the Hampton Inn, who is proposing changes to the facade of their building, which would again make it look less box-like and include some portals and ornamentation on the building. They also have a presentation coming up, which would not be ready by the next meeting for a second hotel by the same property owners, which would be on an adjacent property to the Hampton Inn. But I don't believe they're ready at this time for that.
Let me ask the commission how they feel and who's available next week.
Why is the Hampton Inn coming before the Historic Preservation Commission?
They're not, they're, it's strictly a courtesy, that it's a design consideration and that I guess they're being sensitive to the community and wanting to get feedback, much as we did with the restaurant that's going in across the street. So there's really no legal requirement on either of these projects as they come forward.
The meeting is at 5:30?
Here?
Here, yes.
And again, there's no business to be conducted, so if you're not able to make it...
So it's just basically invitation, it is the historic's meeting, not the planning and zoning meeting?
That's correct. It's just an informational session.
Would, excuse me, we didn't cover all the elements when we met last time with Historic Preservation. Would that be back on the agenda to discuss the design standards and plaza lighting and the elements we didn't get to?
No, because it's a regular meeting.
It's already been noticed, and to be honest with you, I've kind of punted that ball to the new planning director.
Okay, okay. I have county planning commission that night, so I'm not going to be able to come. I'd love to be there, but...
Who could attend from this group? Who would like to?
I actually wouldn't know till next week, because I think I have a prior commitment in Albuquerque, being the president of the Mexico Propane Association, so I wouldn't know till June. If I, if they move our meeting, then I probably would like to come.
I would like to attend, but I can't.
Okay. How about this...
What was the date? 8th of April?
Yes, that's right. Yes, next Wednesday. And the actual meeting starts at 5:30, but there are a couple of cases on there.
Okay. Is that the demolition?
Yes.
Yeah, the other matter that might be of interest to the planning commission is if you know where the post office is, right next to that was the Dragonfly and another house. And there's a proposal that came before the planning commission in the past to put, one of Mr. Irvin's projects, to put a apartment complex back there in the two buildings in front. From what I can tell of the, at the historic commission and the planning commission, it was a consideration that they actually provided some screening to this main street of that project. And their proposal would be to demo one or both of those at that time. So again, that's another matter that now that's not being considered as the planning approval has been vacated because it wasn't acted on, so the demo, but I believe the proposal is still to do the, come back to do the project.
The original plan's been vacated, and so it was, yes, depending on how it goes with the buildings, the new plans will be determined whether or not the approval is through.
So, Mr. Bellis, so the invitation is just for, just to invite us, or is it critical for us to be there to understand what's happening? I'm assuming some of these projects will come to us in a discussion phase.
That's correct.
What's the reasoning behind the invitation, I guess?
So, well, the first two projects for design consideration in that what Commissioner Durham said, that there seems to be a desire to create beyond the historic district some sort of design standard that we suddenly go, don't go to boxy glass buildings. And so it's informational in that sense. The other one, because at some point, you're right, that the other project, no matter how the demolition is handled, probably will come back in regards to how that entire parcel is treated. So what we could do, Mr. Chairman, is just send out a notice and an invitation to the members of the commission stating what the three matters are and if anybody is available and interested, they could attend.
I think that we should handle it that way, whoever is available, recommend them to attend. I don't know how many, thank you for the invitation, though, and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else from the staff?
Did you mention that we have a new planning director?
We do have a new planning director starting on April 6. Louis Feinberg has worked in Arizona, currently the Planning and Community Development Director for Trinidad. And next meeting, you'll get to meet him and he'll introduce himself.
And Chairman, if I may, Mr. Bellis, is there, are there still open positions that we're trying to fill for the planning and zoning department, or?
Not at this time. We advertised for planner one and two or a senior planner. We have resumes on file for that, including some people that have worked here or lived here in the past. We've put that on hold based on wanting the new planning director to make those decisions, but also we are trying to decide with the state what the fate of our having to do building inspections and get a building official is, because with the new state requirement, you can't have a building inspection program without a CBO. We received two applications, one from Santa Fe, one from Florida, and both wanted six figures. And that didn't go over really big with our budget, which we'd had eight building permits in the first three and a half months totaling, I think, about maybe $1,000. So what we are doing is, I've spoken to the mayor, and we're sending out a letter to other municipalities in the enchanted circle, as some of you are aware. When I was planning director at the county, I had proposed that we have one building department. In fact, we did for a while, and I thought it worked very well. The county has subsequently decided that they don't want to do that anymore. So we will be talking to Red River, the Ski Valley, other towns that certainly are going to have more of a financial constraint on them than we do, to see if in fact, and CID seems very willing to keep giving us extensions until we can work something like that out, that we could have a regional planning department. And we might even include, there's some interest by Los Alamos to participate in that, too.
Good, thank you.
And our hope would be to have a full-service department. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bay, did you have a question?
A question?
Yeah.
This planning director arrives on the 8th, is that what you said?
The 6th.
I'm sorry.
April 6th.
The 6th, thank you.
Yes, Chair. Will he be introduced to the, at the Wednesday meeting next week with Historical Preservation?
I sure hope so. My calendar's full.
Just curious. Yes, Mr. Bellis, who are we using, are we still using the county to do our building inspections now, or?
No, Commissioner, Julie Scancy, who is a certified building inspector and has filled in in the past for inspections for us, is currently doing our plan review and our site inspections. And that's by an arrangement, we were given an extension by CID to be able to do that.
And how much of an extension were we given through the CID?
Uh, 30 days.
Or till we came up with some?
Yeah, 30 days, and then they just want to see where we are in progress. She had to update some credentials, so I'm anticipating that as long as she takes that test for her updating and we show that we have something in the works, because they don't seem very eager to want to send people all the way up from Santa Fe to do it. The fallback, I can tell you legally, is that what will happen is CID will have us take the applications and then they'll get sent to Santa Fe, which is a waste of time, and then they'll require the county to actually do the field inspections.
Okay.
Without getting reimbursed.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Next item is matters from the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that, Mr. Pollard, you had a question in reference to that committee that was being put together at that study session?
Sign ordinance.
Yes, sign ordinance.
Yes, have you given that any or thought that was quite a meeting?
We have not made any progress on that. I'm anticipating a work session with the town council next week and discussing with them who they would like to assign to that committee.
Neither Commissioner Romero or I, who somehow volunteered, are anxious for you to do it really quickly.
I'm sure you're not. Nor am I.
So within that, I know one of the council members at that meeting or after that meeting brought up the question that there were three items on the agenda that we didn't get to because of the long discussion and the sign ordinance. So what I had shared, and I think you were part of that conversation, is that we would maybe give these items to that committee to discuss. So thank you for volunteering, but I just wanted to just put that out there.
And I would like to thank the commissioners for volunteering to do that. One of the things, Mr. Chairman, I do want to mention about that, that is causing something of a delay in there, and there is a legitimate reason for that, is that afterwards, Mr. Palacios gave a very detailed explanation of how there had been really detailed examinations of a number of these areas, the lighting, the signage, and that it sort of hit the planning department and got to governing body and nothing was ever done with it, and they just kept what was there. And that before we reinvent the wheel, we may want to go back and take a look at those. So we're trying to locate a full record of all of that, because from the pieces I've seen, they did a remarkably good job and it would probably save us a ton of time.
Great, great. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Finally, you make a motion.
Right, finally, you make a motion.
Is there a second? There is a first and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you.